Dr. Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Ciomo.
Present.
Counselor Edwards. Counselor Asabi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Garrison.
Here.
Counselor Janey. Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem. Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that we have a quorum. At this time, I would like all colleagues, guests, staff to please rise as our clerk brings us through our invocation for the day, and then she will lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon. Blessed are the just, for they have reward in indestructible integrity. Blessed are they who labor in the vineyards of the public realm, for they shall be remembered. Blessed are they who love their nation enough to praise its strengths and criticize its weaknesses, for they shall be made wise. Blessed are public officials who are responsive to the needs of these, the least of the people, for they shall be deputies of the community. Blessed are they who serve the public good, for their reward is in being used. Blessed are the powerful who acknowledge their power as both gift and responsibility, for they know the binding obligation of their bounty. Blessed are they who rebuke narrow self-interest to sustain the common wheel, for they are the patriots of the nation. Blessed are they who rise above partisan loyalties, for they shall be administrators of the public trust. And blessed are the people who seek justice in an imperfect world, for they shall be welcomed into the beloved community. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, well, she just told folks I should tell you about my T-shirt. I was at the Dever School yesterday, which is in Dorchester. They're doing incredible work at the Dever School, which also used to be in the district that our clerk represented when she was the District III counselor. And they were handing out these T-shirts that say, "Immigrants make the Dever School great." We know immigrants make the city of Boston great as well, but I thought it was really great that the students were highlighting the value of our immigrant community, and they were doing it in a visible way. So I'm rocking the T-shirt at the council meeting on behalf of the students, the faculty, the staff at the Dever School. So thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to invite up Counselor Asabi George, who has a special presentation.
I'm just taking a moment to invite members of our Boston EMS to the podium. Come on all the way up. As a part of our agenda today, we'll be marking and resolving this week as EMS Week here in the city of Boston. I'm very excited to present this resolution in recognition of some of the hardest-working professionals in our medical community, especially here in the city of Boston. This year marks the 45th Annual EMS Week, Emergency Services Week, a national observance celebrating EMS practitioners and the important work they do in our nation's communities. The theme this year is beyond the call, to demonstrate a powerful message that the EMS profession is about excellent patient care and also the expansive support services they deliver to Boston residents. Among the city departments impacted by the opioid epidemic, in their role as first responders to crisis situations, our EMS department serves on the front lines of Boston's efforts to combat this crisis. I'd like to express my sincerest gratitude to all of our emergency medical service department members for their tireless community service and the high-quality medical services they deliver to Boston residents. I'm very proud to file this resolution today, recognizing this week as National Emergency Services Week, and to recognize Boston's EMS department. Thank you. I'm not sure if anybody wants to say a few words about your work. Come on up. You're no stranger to this.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon. Kevin Shea, Superintendent Chief of EMS, speaking on behalf of Chief Houli, and all the men and women of Boston EMS. We really appreciate you taking the time to acknowledge the hard work and dedicated service of our men and women who perform 24/7, 365 days a year. We really appreciate taking that time, especially during EMS Week, and we actually look forward to this photo op. We look forward to this photo op every year. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I love how you just call it exactly what it is.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, everybody.
Come on up. Come on up.
You good? Oh, I am. I'm good. You're good? I suck it in. That was for me. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. One of my former students is going to this class, so.
Oh, nice. Excellent.
I love when I watch something. I mean, I'm a. She texts me. She's like, I just saw my history. It wasn't really well. Thank you guys so much. Thank you. 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 Will they get the viewers? Kevin, wait. Are you? Are you? Did you? No. Okay. Okay. We'll do. Perfect. So it's not in my. Okay, perfect.
That was really great, actually. Thank you, Nani.
Thank you. I love how you pay attention to these things. I was just asking, Ciomo. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if we could amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselor Baker, who also obviously covers the Dever School, is here, as well as Counselor Flaherty. And just quickly want to acknowledge, anytime we have young people coming to our council meeting in the middle of the day, sometimes they're not the most exciting meetings, we want to acknowledge you. So we have some incredible students here from the Boston Green Academy. I love you. You can do that. Yes, you can do that. Thank you, guys, for being here. Thank you for visiting City Hall today. Thank you for showing up at our meetings. Many of us know your principal, Matt, very well, but thank you. And I also want to acknowledge that the school is in Counselor Ciomo's district, but really appreciate the presence of you students here at our council meeting. So thank you. And now for another special presentation by me and Counselor Asabi George. We'll ask Madeline to come up as well. Good. So this is a presentation that Counselor Asabi George and I are doing together, and it's to recognize a nonprofit called Together She Can, which some of you have probably heard about, because we are collecting toiletries for this organization this week. And so I know some folks have already started to bring their donated toiletries in. And Madeline Park, who is from the organization, will say a few words in a minute. But, you know, wanted to recognize them for the work that they do to support men and women who are experiencing homelessness in the city of Boston, and doing this in partnership with Counselor Asabi George, who chairs that respective council committee, but also has been doing a lot of work in this space since she got to the council. Together She Can strives to improve the quality of life for those experiencing homelessness by providing them with hygiene and beauty products to better their health, their wellness, and to allow them the opportunity to feel like themselves again. We all know that this is a major issue in the city of Boston, not just for adults, but also our young people, including some of our BPS students. So really excited for you to be here today. I'll have Counselor Asabi George say a few words, as well as talk about the citation, and then Madeline to say a few words as well. But thank you for the work that you do on behalf of Together She Can.
Thank you for being here. I just want to add a little bit of information about the work that Together She Can, Together She Can, has been able to do. Since 2016, they've gifted over 5,000 hygiene bags to over 50 different programs. They've partnered with the Woods-Mullen Shelter, the Pine Street Inn Shelter, through their Women's Inn, Women's Lunch Place, Rosie's Place, as well as Crossroads. They are hosting later this month, or later this week, Pop-Up on Health and Wellness at the Engagement Center on May 25 from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. That's the Engagement Center located on Southampton Street here in Boston. And it's more than just a nonprofit. It's an organization that does the work and supports people who are vulnerable, who are in crisis, and who are experiencing homelessness. So I just want to thank them, and thank you, Counselor Campbell, for including me in this day. Congratulations to you. Thank you.
Yeah, so my name is Madeline Park. I started Together She Can in 2016. We became an official 501(c)(3) about a year and a half ago. So what we do is, we all travel a lot. We all get the extra lotions from our aunts and uncles at Christmas. We take all of that stuff that you don't need, we package it up, and we give it to people in need. Right now, we're doing it on a monthly recurring basis, where we'll drop anywhere from 100, 150 to all of the shelters around Boston. We strive to do as much as we can so that they can focus their money, their time, and their efforts on getting to that next step in their life. So a lot of local businesses are coming this weekend. We're going to be providing free haircuts, clothing, bedding, manicures, dental wellness checks, first aid, and of course, we have a ton of volunteers that are here to help and, you know, support our homeless communities in any way we can. So thank you very much for having me.
I'd like to invite my colleagues up for a quick picture. Thank you.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much.
That's very controversial.
I know. It's a tough one, right? Thank you. Yeah, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Very good to meet you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Yep. Well, it will be.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. And now, moving on to the regular order of business, moving on to approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes from the last council meeting are so approved. Madam Clerk, if we could read reports of public officers and others, if we could read dockets 0525 through 0829 together?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0825, notice received from the City Council. Over absence from the Boston City Council meeting on Wednesday, May 22, 2019. Docket number 0826 is received from Keegan, Orland, LLP, regarding N-Star Electric Company, DBA, Eversource. I'm sorry. Eversource Energy, EFSP, 19-03, DPU, 19-15, provided a replacement for a new transmission line. Docket number 0827, notice received from the Mayor of his appointment of Joseph Callahan, interim commissioner of property management, effective May 6, 2019. Docket number 0828, notice received from the Mayor of the appointment of Robert Santiago, commissioner of Veterans Services, effective May 6, 2019. And docket number 0829, notice received from the City Clerk, in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, regarding action taken by the Mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of April 24, 2019.
Dockets 0825 through 0829 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0830, communication was received from Dion S. Irish, Chair of the Board of Election, for your approval of citizen petition entitled, "Petition for renaming Dudley Square to Nubian Square."
Docket 0830 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0831, notice received from the Mayor of his absence from the city from 11:00 a.m. on Wednesday, May 15, 2019, until 4:00 p.m. on Thursday, May 16, 2019.
Docket 0831 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action?
Docket number 0137, an ordinance regarding Fair Work Week employment standards for city contractors.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This matter was refiled from 2018. It was sponsored by our colleague, City Counsel, Michelle Wu. We held a working session Monday, May 20, at the Beaumont Room. The proposed ordinance seeks to, among other things, require the city of Boston, city contractors and subcontractors to provide work schedules that are predictable and flexible by providing employees with advance notice of work schedules, requiring employers to provide adequate rest time between. Requiring that employees are compensated when there are employer-initiated changes to the schedule occurring after advanced notice period, and requiring employers to offer available hours to existing workers before hiring new employees. The administration that was present expressed support for the spirit of the legislation, but provided feedback specifically expressing concerns around the city's ability to enforce the legislation, a need for greater data collection with respect to the city's contracts, and as well as the potential financial impacts of the ordinance. In addition, members of the administration, additional members of the administration were at the working session as well, along with several other city of Boston department heads. The committee heard testimony from various stakeholders, Municipal Research Bureau, Mass. Restaurant Association, and Employment Services. Testimony included requests for staffing agencies to be explicitly excluded from the ordinance, and based on the feedback, as chair, recommend the docket 0137 remaining committee for further action, but through the chair will defer to the lead sponsor for further comment. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to rise to thank the chair for his attention to this and making sure we got a hearing in, and to central staff with all of the busyness of budget taking up a lot of the calendar. I really appreciate everyone making time. We had a great discussion, and there were two points that came up that I thought merit doing one more working session after budget about. One is that the administration wanted to suggest some changes around the list of exemptions, particularly to tailor it to make sure that the city would continue to operate in the ways that are often by nature unpredictable, often weather-related or constituent services that require being able to respond immediately. And the second piece was, as the chair said, some more data around how exactly contractors doing business with the city would be affected, what types of, you know, what are their practices now, what would they need to shift. I am grateful that the folks who were involved yesterday had taken the time to sit with many of the largest departments and to understand from those department heads how their operations would be affected in many cases because of our collective bargaining contracts. That stability and predictability is already there for the vast majority of city workers that we would be concerned about, particularly on the lower end of the wage, lower end of the wage scale. So the conversation now is around the contractors doing business with the city. So I would hope that at the next working session, we could cover those two items, as well as come to a decision on the changes that have been suggested by the Mass Staffing Agency, M.R., Mass Restaurant Association, and the Greater Boston Chamber of Commerce, among others. So appreciate your time and look forward to hopefully just one more working session. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Docket 0137 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0622 through 0625, ordinances for the FY '20 operating budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations, annual appropriation for the school department, appropriation for other post-employment benefits known as OPEB, appropriation for certain transportation and public realm improvements, and an appropriation for certain park improvements.
Dockets 0622 through 0625 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0626 through 0628, capital budget appropriations, including loan orders, lease purchase agreements.
Dockets 0626 through 0628 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions?
Docket number 0832, Counselor Garrison offered the following order for hearing regarding the prevention of the exploitation of senior citizens by casinos.
Counselor Garrison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I filed this order for a hearing to discuss prevention, the exploitation of senior citizens by casinos. I foresee this being a major issue moving forward for the city of Boston, as it regards residents of all ages. But I want to specifically highlight how our senior citizens might negatively affect the Incor Boston Harbor Casino and Resort is scheduled to open this June, and many senior citizens from Boston are expected to frequent that casino, which is in such close proximity to Boston. Senior citizens are traditionally the most loyal customers at casinos, and we know that they are oftentimes limit income and should therefore not be unfairly exploited of their resources by a multi-billion dollar casino industry. In the city of Boston, senior citizens are our most vulnerable population as it regards to the possibility of the manipulation of their money and resources. In fact, a university of Pennsylvania study recently indicated that over 10% of peoples over the ages of 65 are at risk, are severely financially problems because of gambling. The Massachusetts Gambling Commission, which regulates casinos in the state, has an ethical obligation to eradicate predatory marketing to senior citizens, and the commission need to be held accountable in regard. We need our state, we need to stay on top of this important issue in order to protect our senior citizens. So I look forward to having an expedited hearing to discuss finding concrete ways to assist senior citizens and prevent the unfair exploitation of their resources by the casino industry. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Garrison. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor O'Malley, as well as Counselor Baker, Counselor Ciomo, as well as the chair. Docket 0832 will be assigned to the Committee on Small Business and Consumer Affairs.
Docket number 0833, Counselor Asabi George offered the following resolution, recognizing May 19 through the 25th, 2019, as National Emergency Medical Services, known as EMS Week.
Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
The ordinance, I think, is self-explanatory. We did a lovely presentation. I hope you'll all sign on, since you're all in the photo op. Thank you.
Suspend the rules and adopt.
Suspend, suspend the rules and I move for doc, or I hope you'll move for adoption.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Baker, Counselor Ciomo, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zachem, Counselor McCarthy, as well as the chair. Docket zero, at this time, Counselor Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0833. All those in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0833 has been passed. Moving on to personnel orders?
Docket number 0834, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Wu.
Counselor Wu seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 8034. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0834 has been passed.
Docket number 0835, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Wu.
Counselor Wu seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the third late-file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the first late-file matter has been passed.
Fourth late-file matter, May 22, 2019. Dear Clerk Feeny, I regret that I am unable to attend the May 22, 2019 council meeting due to work-related travel. I look forward to attending the next council session. Thank you. Please read this letter into the record. Regards, Counselor Lydia Edwards, District 1.
The fourth late-file matter will be placed on file.
And the fifth late-file matter, offered by City Counsel, Anisa Asabi George, resolution supporting the Behavioral Health Coverage Transparency Act. Whereas in 2018, Congress passed the Mental Health Parity and Addiction Equity Act, known as MHPAEA, to prevent group health plans and health insurance issuers that provide mental health or substance use disorder benefits from imposing less favorable benefit limitations on those benefits than on medical surgical benefits. And whereas the city of Boston has a responsibility to ensure access to comprehensive and affordable behavioral health services, therefore be it resolved that the Boston City Council go on record in support of the United States Behavioral Health Coverage Transparency Act that seeks to strengthen parity in mental health and substance use disorder benefits, filed on May 22, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam President. I'd like to first start by thanking Senator Elizabeth Warren and Congressman Joe Kennedy. The Behavioral Health Coverage Transparency Act is vital to ensuring everyone has access to comprehensive and affordable mental health and substance use disorder treatment. It's despicable that in 2019, we are still fighting for mental health parity. Despite the 2008 passing of the Mental Health Parity and Addiction Equity Act, in Congress, group health insurance, group health plans and health insurance issuers are still avoiding accountability and imposing less favorable benefit limitations on. The ayes have it, the first late-file matter has been passed.
In City Council, May 22nd, 2019, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Flynn.
Counselor Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the second late-file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the second late-file matter has been passed.
In City Council, May 22nd, 2019, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Siomo.
Counselor Siomo seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the third late-file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the third late-file matter has been passed.
Fourth late-file matter, May 22nd, 2019. Dear Clerk Feeny, I regret that I am unable to attend the May 22nd, 2019 council meeting due to work-related travel. I look forward to attending the next council session. Thank you. Please read this letter into the record. Regards, Counselor Lydia Edwards, District 1.
The fourth late-file matter will be placed on file.
And the fifth late-file matter, offered by City Council Anissa Asabi George, resolution supporting the Behavioral Health Coverage Transparency Act. Whereas in 2018, Congress passed the Mental Health Parity and Addiction Equity Act, known as MHPAEA, to prevent group health plans and health insurance issuers that provide mental health or substance use disorder benefits from imposing less favorable benefit limitations on those benefits than on medical-surgical benefits. And whereas the city of Boston has a responsibility to ensure access to comprehensive and affordable behavioral health services, therefore be it resolved that the Boston City Council go on record in support of the United States Behavioral Health Coverage Transparency Act that seeks to strengthen parity in mental health and substance use disorder benefits, filed on May 22nd, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam President. I'd like to first start by thanking Senator Elizabeth Warren and Congressman Joe Kennedy. The Behavioral Health Coverage Transparency Act is vital to ensuring everyone has access to comprehensive and affordable mental health and substance use disorder treatment. It's despicable that in 2019, we are still fighting for mental health parity. Despite the 2008 passing of the Mental Health Parity and Addiction Equity Act, in Congress, group health insurance, group health plans and health insurance issuers are still avoiding accountability and imposing less favorable benefit limitations on behavioral health care than on medical and surgical benefits. Since the beginning of this year, I've been facilitating a series of roundtables and meetings with mental health providers. A consistent theme is that disparate impact on insurance companies regarding mental health care, both for providers and patients. Large insurance providers are looking out for profit, not for patients or providers. Behavioral Health Coverage Transparency Act will strengthen enforcement of existing mental health parity laws by increasing mandatory federal audits of health plans, requiring insurance companies to disclose how they make decisions on behavioral health care coverage, and establishing a consumer parity portal. I commend my colleagues at the federal level for filing this important piece of legislation. The city of Boston should stand with them to fight this issue to ensure access to comprehensive behavioral health treatment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George, and I may have missed the suspension of the rules and adoption.
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zachem, as well as the Chair. Counselor Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of the fifth late-file matter. All those in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the fifth late-file matter has been adopted. Anyone looking to remove a matter from the green sheets? Moving right along. I am informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter to be added to the consent agenda. Hearing and seeing no objections, the matter is so added. At this time, the Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. Any announcements at this time? Counselor Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, for a very brief recognition. Matt Broder, who works in my office here in Boston City Hall, was awarded just this past week, an award from the Cape and Islands Democratic Council and the Dennis Democratic Town Committee for his work on the coordinated Democratic campaign this past fall, working on successful campaigns, really electing Senator Julian Seer on the Cape, Attorney General Healy, Senator Warren, and other Democratic candidates on the Cape. And he certainly, that's where we first crossed paths during my statewide campaign last year, and we're proud to have him in our office. I didn't want to prepare a second certificate of recognition in recognition of a certificate of recognition, but I do think it's important that we recognize that our staff not only are working very hard here every day in City Hall on the issues that we're all talking about here, but also out in the broader community. And Matt is originally from the Cape. He is now clearly a Boston resident, he's moving soon to Counselor O'Malley's district, so should get campaigning on that. But I just want to say, he's been a huge addition to our office, and I think a well-deserved award from the Cape and Islands Democratic Council, which is an incredible organization fighting for our democratic values on the Cape as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Counselor Wu, you have the floor. I'm sorry, Counselor Wu. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise, I ask for unanimous consent to make a brief statement. Go right ahead. Okay. Two weeks from tonight, I'm hosting an event with a member of Boston's finest. His name is Sergeant Brett LaBelle. He's a terrific guy. I think many of you know him, and he's a contestant on this season of The Amazing Race. So we're hosting a fundraiser where all proceeds go to COPS for Kids with Cancer, which is a great organization that he's involved with. It's going to be two weeks from tonight, which I believe is the 5th of June, at Kelleher's, which I understand is an establishment in my district, which, that's a little joke. Tim got it. I'm known to have office hours there occasionally. So Kelleher's Pub on June 5th, Wednesday, 7 o'clock it starts, the show is on promptly at 8:00. Brett's a terrific guy, he was on Survivor before. We actually did another fundraiser for the COPS for Kids Foundation. And come on by, and everyone watching, please join us. It's a great, great, great event and a great cause, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues. Madam President, I wish to speak for a minute on upcoming Memorial Day that will be taking place in almost every neighborhood across Boston. This is a solemn day for so many families across our city and across our country. Many of these families lost a son or lost a daughter, whether it was in World War II, Korea, or Vietnam, or the recent battles. But when a veteran serves, so doesn't the family. And when a family member loses a veteran, that pain stays with them for their entire life. So on this day, let us remember the young men and women that paid the supreme sacrifice for our country. And it's really not a day off, or it's not a time to have parties or anything, it's a time to maybe say a silent prayer and remember those people, young men and women that didn't come back home to their families. And over the weekend, Madam President, I had the opportunity to be in Chinatown, and there was a Chinese veteran, served in the U.S. Army, his name was George Oi, and lived on Tyler Street, enlisted in the Army, was a private first class, and he paid the supreme sacrifice for our country in Germany during World War II, as I mentioned. So I want to say thank you to the American Legion Post of Chinatown for being there, for the Mayor's Office of Veteran Services for helping coordinate the event. But even maybe 50 years later, 60 years later, you still see the pain and the hurt in the families that are still thinking about their loved one, you know, 60 or 70 years later. So on behalf of the City Council, and I know many of my colleagues will also be at many events over the weekend, I just want to let you know that the City Council and the Mayor's Office as well will be well-represented over the weekend during Memorial Day exercises. Thank you, Madam President.
No, thank you, Counselor Flynn, and I think we've said this every year, thank you on behalf of colleagues as well for your service to this country and for your dedication to veterans through your committee work, as well as through your community work. So thank you very much. I also wanted a quick reminder that we are starting our racial equity trainings today. The first one is 2 to 5. They're going to happen every month. I think there was some confusion as to who could participate. It is open to every single member of the Boston City Councils. That means if you are an intern, if you are a counselor, if you are a staff, you are welcome to join us. The first session is today from 2 to 5. I think we will be in the Pimonte Room. If you have questions, Ellie, of course, on my team is ready and available to answer those questions. She is waving to my left. If you cannot make some of the sessions, there are opportunities to sort of get filled in, I think, on what we talk about. But also, going forward, the goal is to do these every month to cover different topics. But it's open to everyone. I've already heard from some folks that plan on participating. I will be there, I will be at all of them. But just wanted to remind folks of that. I also wanted to thank my team for coordinating across, frankly, all of our offices. That is not easy, so kudos to Ellie in particular for your work, and also to central staff for working with us as well to make this a little bit easier. At this time, I would like all colleagues and guests to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, John Hannah. For Counselor Janie Mulassy Booker and Tina Williams. And on behalf of the entire council, Charles Cook, who is the father of our Commissioner Chris Cook. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when we adjourn today's meeting, we do so in memory of the following, in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in this chamber at 12:00, at Boston City Hall, on June 5th at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.